I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off any cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone here is planning on presenting a testimony, please sign the sheet in the back of the room so we can have it and we'll take it in that order. Anyone who wants an opportunity to speak tonight will have the time to do so. Please step up to the podium when it's your turn and make sure you clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. And we also request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember, these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. It's now, it is now Wednesday, the 11th day of June, the time is six o'clock, the time set for the public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Chair?
No, sir, there are none.
No changes to the agenda? All right. The first item up is unfinished business while it'll all require a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Okay, motion carries. So I'll open a public hearing on application 2025-00462 ACV Linda Cotner. I've, we've asked Amelia Haynes to give us a report and we'll go from there. So Amelia, go ahead.
Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2025-00462-ac-v is an accessory use and variance application to allow the expansion of an existing detached secondary dwelling to expand beyond the 1,200 square foot maximum of living space. The property is located at 4905 West View Place and contains one acre in the estate residential district. The property is close by to Meridian City Limits and is within Meridian's area of city impact. Most of the surrounding uses are residential uses. The property owners initially constructed the existing secondary dwelling to accommodate themselves while their daughter would move into the primary dwelling. It was built by bringing a house built in 1912 onto the property and constructing an attached garage to the structure. They were already granted a variance for the location of the attached garage as it was in the front yard setbacks. However, after finishing construction, they realized the secondary dwelling does not have enough room to accommodate the property owner's wheelchair appropriately. The property owners moved back into the primary dwelling and now want to expand the secondary dwelling to accommodate their daughter and her growing family. The applicant is proposing to build a finished basement below the existing secondary dwelling so as not to affect the outward appearance of the structures. They state this will allow the property owners to remain in the primary dwelling while having enough room to accommodate their daughter with more space. They do not wish to expand any existing structures by regular additions as this would affect the historic nature of the structures and coverage of the property. The proposed new living space square footage of the secondary dwelling would be 1,400 square feet. In order to be granted a variance, a project must meet the three required findings. First, that it does not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Second, that it relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. And third, that it is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff has determined that the proposal does meet the three required findings as it is not a special privilege not allowed in the base district as the original footprint of the secondary dwelling was allowed in expansion already as it is under 1,200 square feet. The expansion would fit under the existing dwelling as a finished basement. The variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site as the dwelling constructed does not accommodate a wheelchair to be used when originally constructed. The proposal will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare as we received no comments in opposition from neighbors or agencies. Staff finds that the application complies with county code and recommends approval to the board. However, the board should weigh any testimony given at tonight's hearing prior to making their decision. This presentation will be known as exhibit number 28 and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, there's no questions from the commission. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak?
Briefly, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not Linda, obviously. She's the cute one in the wheelchair back here.
Okay. Hello, cute one.
I can't really add too much to what she said other than...
You need to identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Rich Cotner. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay. Your address?
4905 West View Place in Meridian.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, myself and my daughter are the caretakers for my wife. And the main reason we want to keep my daughter close by, she helps take care of my wife, especially when I'm out of town or I'm gone. That was the whole reason to bring that building in to begin with, so her and her new husband could be right next door. We had a plan, we had a great plan. We were going to move into that house. They were going to take the big house when they started having children. So we remodeled that house ADA compliant with barn doors, four-foot wide openings. Everything was great until we put furniture in there. And then you couldn't get the wheelchair around in there. She could not move around in the house. So that eliminated our plan, which kind of devastated us because now if they're going to have children, they have to move away. And I can't have a caretaker an hour away, especially if I'm in Alaska working. So that's why we want to put a basement in the bottom of it, leave the kids over there. They can, they can have two or three kids in 1,600 or 1,400 square feet. We did it in 1,200 when we were younger. So that's all I can really add.
All right. Well, thank you. Is there any questions from the commission? Any questions? Okay, no questions, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else? I don't have anybody on the list here that's, that's signed up. Is there anyone else from the audience wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. All right, Amelia, do we have any, anything we need to add to the record besides your presentation?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the, the public hearing on application 2025-00462-ac-v Linda Cotner. Okay, so it's a pleasure to the board. We need a motion to either approve it. I, I would recommend we approve it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'll move that we approve application number 202500462-ac-v based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard this evening.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I think the applicant has made a, a good showing and compelling testimony to justify the, us voting in support of this.
I would agree. Good, good presentation. I'm glad you got a little time off from Alaska. All right, thank you. Well, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next we'll get into new business. I will open the public hearing on application 2025-00015ZCDACUMSP Kimberly Horn and Associates. We'll have Doug Holton give us a presentation and we'll go from there. Doug?
Ada County Commissioners, project number 2025-00015-ZA-DA-CU-MSP is an application for a zoning ordinance map amendment, a development agreement to, to rezone from the rural urban transition district to the neighborhood commercial district, a conditional use and a master site plan for a gas station and convenience store. The property is 16.2 acres and located at the northwestern intersection of West Amity Road and South Ten Mile. The project is proposing to occupy roughly 3.2 acres of that 16.2 acres. The property is within the rural urban transition district. CUNA city limits are approximately 2,300 feet to the southwest and Meridian city limits are approximately 4,000 feet to the northeast. The property is within Meridian's area of impact. Nearby properties are residential, commercial, and agricultural in use. The future land use maps for Meridian designate the site and general area as mixed use. This proposal complies with the Meridian Comprehensive Plan as adopted by Ada County because the requested rezone to neighborhood commercial and proposed use are compatible with a mixed use designation. This slide shows the site plan of the proposed gas station and convenience store. The project is proposing to use a well and septic system. While the county has approved gas stations and convenience stores within areas of impact, the city of Meridian has had concerns with the lack of urban services in the area. In 2023, Ada County approved a similar project at the southeastern portion of this intersection. Ada County Code 8-4A-22 states that new development within an urban service planning area shall be served by urban public facilities. This property is within Meridian's southwest phasing sewer master plan. As a condition of approval, the applicant shall install a draw, dry line for water and sewer. Once Meridian city services are adjacent to the site, the property shall connect to city services. Some of the other agency comments received were Ada County Highway District recommends approval if all site-specific conditions are met and West Amity Road and South Ten Mile Road are constructed with new pavement, gravel shoulders, and detached sidewalks. The Meridian Rural Fire Department commented that separate fire protection systems may be required and available fire flow documentation shall be provided. Central District Health recommended the application be tabled, but staff worked with Central District Health and the applicant to include conditions of approval with the understanding from the applicant that they must have Central District Health approval prior to any permits being issued. The Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for this project and staff finds that this application complies with Ada County Code and recommends approval to the board. This presentation will be an exhibit to the record and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Just clarification, what you said about, what was it from Central District Health?
Um, they will, the, they will require the applicant to have the understanding that they must have Central District Health approval prior to receiving any permits.
Excuse me, follow-up?
Go ahead.
And, and they wanted that as a condition of approval or?
Uh, I worked with them and the applicant to get that included as a condition of approval.
Okay, so it is in the condition of approval?
Yes.
And they understand that? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
What city services are Meridian concerned about them not having?
Lack of sewer and water.
Well, that's it?
Yes.
And were they neutral or they opposed?
Um, they were concerned. That was the words they used.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, on condition eight, it says comply with requirements of Boise Project Board of Control. What are those conditions?
Um, that is a great question. Essentially just to maintain that other properties are able to access irrigation ditches.
It, it, follow-up?
Yeah.
So, so is there a condition that they use surface water, the water right for surface water for surface landscaping, et cetera?
I believe that is not included, no.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board to our staff? Okay, thank you. All right, is the applicant, applicant here? Give us your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. Brandon McDougald, 1100 West Idaho Street, Suite 210 in Boise. So Doug, thank you for that. I think you covered the project extremely well and appreciate all your help through the application process. To answer your question in regards to Boise projects, there's Jamison Lateral that kind of runs parallel with Ten Mile there and it's just making sure that we continue that surface water through there so we don't obstruct that. We've got a driveway that crosses it, so we've got to provide a, a pipe that will continue to convey that. And then I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that, that you might have on the project.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Go ahead.
As a follow-up to that, so do you understand, did you understand my secondary question about use of the, you have a surface water right, correct?
We do, yeah.
And you're using, you're planning on using the surface water right, not the well right, for landscaping, correct?
Correct.
That was my question.
Okay, well, I'd have a question for you. A number of years ago, Circle K pulled right out of this whole valley. How'd you get them back in?
They've changed their mind, so I, I think they've saw the opportunity and they want to, want to make sure that they're a part of the growth of the community.
Okay, well, yes, so you'll be the only Circle K in the whole Treasure Valley, right?
It'll be the first one.
First, first one, yeah.
First one in the Treasure Valley, yeah.
Yeah. Now, are you going to sell gas here? Because some Circle K's don't, don't deal with gas.
Yes.
You are going to have gas.
Yes.
Yeah, because I know some Circle K's when I travel around, they don't have gas. They just, just convenience store. But you're going to do gas and everything, huh?
Correct.
Okay, well, I don't have any more questions. Is there any other questions?
Is it going to be a traditional gas station convenience store or is it going to be kind of one of these expanded ones with more stuff?
Uh, traditional with gas, fuel canopy, and, and traditional convenience store.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, all right. Any, go ahead.
Just back to the chairman's question. So you know that kitty corner from where you are, there's another...
Maverick.
Similar station, right?
Yes.
Or going to be.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, well, I don't have any other questions. Do you have any, any, anything else you'd like to say in closing?
Um, not unless there's any further questions.
Okay. We don't have any questions. Is there anyone? I don't have anybody signed up, so is there anyone in the audience wish to speak for or against this proposal? Okay, hearing none. I'll ask Doug, do you have any, any additional information or documents that you need to add to the record?
Besides my presentation, I believe that because the development agreement hasn't been signed yet, we'll need to table this for an open business meeting to sign the development agreement as well as the zoning ordinance amendment.
Really? Okay. So we need to table things with the idea that we're approving it, correct? And give us a date.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yeah, you could move to approve and table for final documents. So we'd recommend about the June 17th open business meeting?
June 17th. Okay. All right, then I accept the motion. The motion would be at least my, my recommendation based on the finding of fact and conclusions is that we approve this application and table it until the 17th.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve application 2025-00015-ZC-DA-CU-MSP Kimberly Horn and Associates with the, and to table it until June 17th OPM so the final documents can be prepared.
Correct.
Based on the conclusions of law, and the fact and what we've discussed here.
Yep. Okay, do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor and we'll get those documents by the 17th?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we believe so.
Okay. All right, well, the motion is to, to table this until the 17th with the understanding that we'll approve it on the 17th with the, all the appropriate documents. So all in favor of the motion signify? Wait a minute. I didn't close the public hearing, did I? Or did I? I did. Okay. All right. Uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next we'll have for the next item of business, application, I'll open a public hearing on application 2025-00366 CUMSPV Eric Hagan Architecture. We'll have Makella Owens give us a presentation. Did I get that right?
Mr. Chair, it's Makella.
Makella.
Yeah, really close.
Okay, Makella.
Okay.
Thank you, Makella.
Of course. Okay, so good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Tonight I'm going to be presenting project 2025-00366-CU-MSPV, which is an application by Eric Hagan Architecture for a conditional use permit, master site plan, and variance to allow for the continued operation and expansion of an outdoor amusement or recreation facility specifically in animal sanctuary. Included is a variance to exceed the maximum lot coverage allowed in the rural residential district. The project location is 12622 South Cloverdale Road. It is located at the southeast corner of the Cloverdale Road and Cuna Road intersection. This property is approximately 2.93 acres in size and is located within the Cuna area of city impact. It is located within the rural residential district, which normally requires 10 acres for a minimum lot size. This property is only 2.93 acres, which means that it is undersized for the RR district, but it's just slightly oversized so it can't qualify as a rural residence, which has a cutoff of 2.5 acres. This site has historically functioned as a rural residential property and it's now operating as an animal sanctuary named Dominifarm. It also serves as the applicant's primary residence. For some additional site context, this is abutting CUNA city limits on the north and west property lines and is beholden to CUNA's comprehensive plan. CUNA comprehensive plan designates this area as low-density residential, which supports the preservation of open space and agriculture and limits development intensity. This project aligns with several of CUNA's planning goals, including preserving outer areas for open space and agricultural uses, supporting small and large-scale agricultural activities, and promoting the preservation of CUNA's agricultural heritage. Because the animal sanctuary maintains a rural character on the site and supports agricultural stewardship, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the intent of Ada County's rural residential district. Moving on to the scope of the request before you today, the animal sanctuary is currently operating on the site. Dominifarm Animal Sanctuary is a nonprofit organization serving as a permanent rescue facility for abused, neglected, or disabled barnyard animals. The sanctuary is operated by the applicant with the help of volunteers. There is no employees operating the sanctuary. We don't have animal sanctuary as a use in our allowed use table in Ada County Code, so outdoor amusement and recreation facility is the use that this best fell under in our table because there are visitors that come to the site for tours. The sanctuary operates 24/7 for animal care, but public visitation is limited to weekday appointments between 1:00 and 4:00 PM and some seasonal Sunday group tours from 11:30 AM to 12:30 PM, so just in that lunch hour. So it has very limited hours of operation when it comes to public visitation. Primarily, the applicant is seeking approval for the existing use and the existing structures on the site that are associated with animal care. The applicant has brought all of the applicable structures into compliance with the setbacks of the rural residential district, which was quite a process. But now they are proposing some additional site improvements and a structure for the use and the expansion of this use on the site. So the new structure is a 40 by 40, 1,600 square foot barn for horses, a stable that you can see down there in the bottom right corner of this site plan shown outlined in red here. They're also proposing 13 parking spaces on gravel surfacing, including two ADA stalls. That parking area is going to be a new access point off of Cuna Road located at the northeast portion of the site, and no outdoor lighting or amplified sound systems are proposed. Just to give you a little bit more context of what they're proposing, they are going to provide this gravel parking for visitors to the site, as you can see in this slide, and they are going to be requesting a landscaping waiver. As you can see, the proposed use is being maintained as a rural residential type use. The site is not being developed much more than just the 1,600 square foot horse barn that's being proposed. There is some existing landscaping on the site, primarily in the northwest corner. We have our rural residential landscaping and there's some mature landscaping located in the northeast corner as well that will screen this new gravel parking area. In addition, the only proposed structure is located far to the southeast of the property and is not readily visible from the surrounding roadways or the surrounding neighbors. There is a variance request associated with this application. They would need to exceed the 5% maximum lot coverage that's allowed in the RR district. So as you can see, there's five few structures associated with this use that are already on the site, most used to house animals or provide animal care. A lot of these have been reduced below 200 square feet, separated or otherwise brought into compliance with our code. However, with the addition of the horse barn, it would increase the lot coverage to about 6.17% coverage and the applicant is requesting 7% coverage on the site. As I'm sure you're familiar at this point, there's three findings that we have to meet in order to grant a variance. The first is that it doesn't grant a right or special privilege not otherwise allowed in the base district. The second is that it relieves an undue hardship due to unique characteristics on the site. And the third is that it's not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So staff finds that this lot coverage variance meets all three of these findings. This is a relatively small property that is 2.93 acres. If it was .43 acres smaller, they would qualify as a rural residence and be allowed a 20% lot coverage. In addition, we're considering a code that would increase the lot coverage allowance for the rural residential district to 20% already, and there were no comments that were received from any agencies or neighbors indicating that this use would be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Speaking of those agencies, we transmitted this application to the relevant agencies and received these comments that a building permit will be required, Central District Health wants an accessory use application, the city of Cuna had no objection to this project, Ada County Strategic Planning indicated that it complied with the Comprehensive Plan, Ada County Engineering is requiring a grading permit and for the ADA accessible spaces to be paved and gravel to be used for the other parking surfaces, and Ada County Highway District had no specific comments on the project, but they will require a driveway approach permit for that new driveway on Cuna Road. We did receive one public comment and it indicated support of the project. They indicated that the applicant has gone out of their way to comply with Ada County Development Services requirements and come into compliance with code at financial burden to the applicant, which could affect the animal's welfare. They also offered some financial assistance to the applicant to continue with the sanctuary and just overall was a letter that was very supportive of this application and the applicant's project. There are some key conditions of approval that have been added, most of them coming from those comments we already received, including the building permit, the accessory use septic permit, driveway approach approval. CUNA Rural Fire has not weighed in yet, so we'd like to get their approval before issuing the building permit and then compliance with those engineering comments. Staff finds that this project complies with Ada County Code and does recommend that the board approve this project. I will be adding this presentation to the record as an exhibit and I stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, you have a question?
Uh, yes. Did I understand you correctly that there's a landscape waiver?
Yes.
What, what exactly is that?
So, Mr. Chair Commissioner Daly, basically any conditional use application for the most part requires landscaping, so the applicant is requesting that they do not have to install any additional landscaping for this proposal.
Okay, could you go back to the picture because there is landscaping there now, right? So that, that's why we're, that's why we're saying that?
Yes, Commissioner Daly, that's correct. So this is the site plan that is used throughout that, the application and the project. You can see there's quite a bit of existing residential landscaping on the site and the proposed structure is relatively small and pretty setback, so staff is supportive of the waiver.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for our staff? Okay, any other questions, uh, for our staff? Okay, no questions? Okay, thank, thank you, Makela. Okay, uh, is the applicant here and wish to speak? Hello?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Owen, for that wonderful presentation. My name is Eric Hagan. Uh, I'm the architect. Uh, my office address is at 280 North Eighth Street in Boise. Um, Ms. Delob has gone above and beyond to make this property compliant per current zoning codes for Ada County. And the use that she's doing is, is a use that is welcome and encouraged by the community. Her lot is unfortunately a substandard lot in the area. And as Ms. Owens noted, is right between the higher density allowed in a residential and the lower density allowed in the, um, rural. So, we wanted to make sure that she had room to be able to add the horse barn, which she desperately needs. She has a lot of different animals, a lot of different farm animals on site. And the horse barn is an integral part of the services that she provides as an animal sanctuary. Uh, everything else, the landscaping i- is over landscaped for the site. It may not all be in the same place or where it, where it needs to be, but it, uh, meets all the requirements of the code. And, um, with that, I stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any questions? Okay, no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Is, uh, Debbie Dominique, Dominique De- De Laeble here? Oh, did you wish to speak? You don't have to. You just signed up here, that's all. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great for you to come up and talk about your, your sanctuary there. Seeing as you're the, the owner, I, I take it.
Well, well, thank you, Dominique, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no, no, of course. I'm a little shy.
Well, just go ahead and just give your name again and for, and where you live.
So I'm Dominique Delob, I live one two, uh, one two six two two South Cloverdale Road, Kuna, Idaho, eight three six three four.
Okay, thank you. And if you want to say anything, just, just, you don't, go ahead.
Uh, I wanted to thank Eric Hagan for helping us and Makela, who has been very helpful. Uh, and, uh, it was a difficult project, but, um, we tried to do everything to be compliant. It was very important for us. And, uh, we are doing, uh, a lot of things to serve our community, uh, not only the animals, but also, you know, the schools, the children, uh, the people who love animal. And, uh, we, we're just happy to be there.
Okay, any questions for Dominique from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So how many animals and what kind of animals do you have out there?
We have all kind of animals, from guinea pigs to cows. And we have about 75 animals. Uh, we take care of them, so people surrender them to us, uh, because they don't want to keep them or, uh, because they cannot keep them. And then they are, um, like, uh, permanent residents, they stay with us forever. Uh, we, uh, provide food, uh, also, uh, medical care, uh, farrier, cherer, cherer, you know? And, uh, we, like, we are the only animal sanctuary like that in Idaho. We are the biggest, actually, there are others, but not a lot of them. And, uh, there is a big need, uh, we didn't know at first, but, uh, we have calls every day from people who cannot keep their animals and don't know what to do with them. Uh, there is also a big role, uh, as education, because to, like, break the cycle of abandonment, we found that educating people about how to take care of animals is the most important. Uh, a lot of time, people abandon animals because they adopted them, you know, without knowing what kind of care, what kind of need, what kind of, um, like, um, funding they needed. So that's important to do that. And, uh, there is a huge need in Idaho.
Normally, when we discuss, uh, animal operations, we always ask about the two big issues, or how much noise are they going to make and how much smell? And that's usually dependent on if people live close by. It didn't look like you had too many neighbors close by, but maybe you could address the, those two issues.
Yes, of course, uh, noise and, uh, smell, actually, there is no smell. Uh, we have some of our volunteers who are here, uh, who can see, there is no smell at all, because we, we manage it, we keep it clean. Uh, we pick up the poop, we do a compost pile, there is absolutely no smell. Noise, we never had any complaint, uh, because we are in a rural area. People are used to hear, you know, uh, cows or horses. Actually, they love it. And the complaint we, we have is about the Cloverdale Road, who is very, very busy and makes a lot of noise. So actually, the noise of, of the animal is not heard at all.
And, um, you're requesting a waiver for the landscaping, you want to address that?
Yes, uh, we already have landscaping and, uh, actually, we are nonprofit, so all the money is supposed to go to the animals. And any money that would go to the, um, landscaping that is not really needed, you know, would be like some, I don't know how you say that in English, like, like, we would, I don't know how you say that, but it would be to spoil money, I don't know how you say that, I'm sorry.
Well, when you have an operation like yours, um, i- i- does the state regulate? Is there permits, uh, at the state level or what? What's kind of the oversight?
So we have a nonprofit, um, license, actually, uh, permit, I don't know how you call that. We had to apply, uh, for, uh, to be a nonprofit organization. Uh, and we've been a nonprofit organization, uh, registered in the state of Idaho since 2021. I think that's all we need.
Nothing from, uh, Fish and Game or Department of Agriculture or anything like that?
No, no, actually, we contacted them and said it doesn't need anything.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, any other, uh, questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wish to speak to this application? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Makela, is there any, uh, documents that need to be added to the record?
Mr. Chair, no.
You added your presentation to the record, okay. All right, I'll close the, uh, public hearing on application two zero two five zero zero three six six. Uh, C U M S P V Eric Hagan Architecture. Okay. Uh, it's up to the board now. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve, uh, application two zero two five zero zero three six six dash C U dash M S P dash V. Eric Hagan Architecture. Based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and our discussion this evening.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Approve the application and, uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll say that I think, uh, showing has been made to warrant the, the variance. And, um, appreciate the, the testimony tonight and the people showing up, uh, to support this project. I think it's, uh, sounds like a very, uh, worthwhile project, uh, to take care of, uh, neglected or abandoned animals. So we appreciate, uh, uh, you guys doing that. And, uh, you know, we, we get a lot of people who, you know, have operations out in the county, they don't realize what's, what some of the rules and regulations are for development. It's, it's a common thing. And so we're glad you were able to work with, uh, staff to get those issues sorted out.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, good, thank you. Okay, uh, next, uh, next item of business is, um, application two zero two five. Open a public hearing on application two zero two five zero zero six one six. V A C V Jeremy Butterfield. Uh, we'll have, uh, Brett Danielson give us a report. Go ahead, Brett.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 202500616 V A C dash V is a vacation of a 10-foot utility irrigation and drainage easement and a variance to allow for an existing shed to encroach into a 25-foot side yard setback. The property is generally located in western Ada County and is just east of Ada Canyon County line and south of Interstate 84. The property is located at 6029 West View Drive, contains 6.03 acres. The subject property is parcel B of Lot 9, Block 2 of Apache Heights, Number 2 subdivision. Lot 9 has a 10-foot utility irrig- and irrigation drainage easement along the east property line shown on the screen. The applicant seeks to vacate a portion of this easement. In 2017, an approximately 540 square foot accessory structure was constructed on the property without, uh, without obtaining a building permit or zoning certificate. The accessory structure encroaches three and a half feet into the 10-foot easement. And you can see on the screen here at the lower right-hand corner, that's kind of, uh, the structure that's encroaching into the setback. The applicant stated in their detailed letter, exhibit number five, that when they built their accessory structure, they were incorrectly told that they did not need a permit. And they thought that they had placed the structure far enough away from the property line to not cause any problems. Unfortunately, they assumed that their property line was an old fence that had been in place for decades. This assumption was proved wrong when the house next door was built and a new fence established the property line, which is 10 feet closer to the structure than, uh, what they had initially thought. The approval of the vacation, along with the associated variance application, would allow for the structure to remain in its current location on the property. For the applicant to vacate the easement, they'll need to get approval from the board, as well as obtain relinquishment letters from those entities that have an interest in the easement. Without the approval of the variance, the vacation of the easement would be unnecessary, since the structure would need to be moved out of the setback. And therefore, this would also remove the structure from the easement, negating the need to vacate the easement. The applicant has also applied for a variance for the structure to be within the 25-foot interior side yard, side yard setback. The applicant stated in their detailed letter that the variance is needed, because moving the shed further from the property line is not a viable option because of trees that have been planted near the shed. They also mentioned that they had poured a concrete floor, which unfortunately means that they would be unable to move the structure without destroying that concrete floor. In order to approve a variance, three findings need to be made. One, the variance should not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Two, the variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. And three, the variance should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the variance constitutes the granting of a special privilege as accessory structures and other properties have complied with required setbacks. Staff also finds that the variance does not relieve undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The need for the variance results from not obtaining a building permit and building the structure within the setback. Staff finds that the variance is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare as information regarding the variance was transmitted to affected public agencies charged with the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And none of the agencies, um, or political institutions have indicated that the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. They have been, uh, no comments received from the public on this application. Agency comments include the following. The Ada County Building Official replied that a retroactive building permit is needed for them to make structure. The city of Napa and the Central District Health Department have no objections. The Napa Meridian Irrigation District responded that they have no comment on the application, as no facilities are impacted and plans show storm wars retained on site. The Ada County Survey replied for the vacation ordinance document to clearly define the easement to be vacated. Staff finds that the application does not comply with the Ada County Code and recommends, uh, denial, uh, for the application. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, I'd, I'd have a couple of questions before we, uh, anybody, um. We're being asked to vacate a utility easement. Does the board have the authority to even vacate an easement?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, um, and Commissioners, for the vacation of the easement, uh, there's almost like a, a two-part situation. So the, the board does, you know, has to, to approve of the vacation of the easement, but then we also need to get relinquishment letters from the, and easement holders. This would be like I O Power, Iron Mountain Gas, uh, Central Lake Spark, like the irrigation district, to state that they, you know, have no interest in the easement and, and they're willing to relinquish their interest in the easement. So it's kind of a, a two-parter. So the N T holders have to also approve and provide relinquishment letters, which if you did approve the variant, the vacation, the vacation, that could be a condition of approval. And then the board, you as the board itself will also need to, um, accept that vacation of the easement.
Are we getting this a little ahead of the game then? Because it seems to me like the, uh, the utilities need to first approve a vacation of their easement before we even handle it. Because, because if we, if we approve the vacation of the easement, then, then you have to get permission from the easement, from the utilities. And what if they say no? Then ours doesn't, doesn't make any difference, correct?
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, they would fail to comply with the conditions of approval, so they wouldn't effectively receive their entitlement. So similar to a subdivision where we place multiple conditions that have to be met before they can final out the project. If they were unable to obtain those relinquishments, then they essentially, we essentially wouldn't be vacating that easement, so.
Okay, here, go, go ahead.
So if easement's being vacated, is it the entire easement or is it just a section that would be infringed on by the, by the concrete and the structure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Davidson, it would be the, the section that is encroaching in the, the portion of the, of the utility easement that's where the building and the concrete's encroaching.
Do we know if right now that they're, uh, over any, um, irrigation lines or utility lines?
Um, based, uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Davidson, based on the, the comments we received from the irrigation district, appears that, that they don't have any facilities at that location. So it looks like they're good for the, um, irrigation. With utility easement, uh, with utility companies, um, that's something that, that we would need to, to get those relinquishment letters to verify with them.
Would they, if the utility wanted to build a line right there, would they be able to tunnel, tunnel under the, the structure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Davidson, um, that's a, a good question. So I think it would be up to the utility, uh, company to determine if that would, if that would work for the utility company or not, so.
Okay. Any other, go ahead.
So, then did you, when, when was the dates, uh, the, the fence was, was moved? When was it moved? And when, when did they realize? Was the building built before the fence was moved, I guess?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner, uh, Daly, I believe it was. I think the, and the applicant could probably verify when it was built. I think in their detailed letter, I think they said that the building's been in place for seven and a half years. And I think, um, and I don't know when the, the neighbor built their house. I think that's within the last couple of years of the neighbor built their house, that they realized that, okay, the property line is in a different place than, than where they thought it was.
And so the, the fence was, has been moved, there, there's a new fence, one fence is torn down and another fence is built?
That is correct. Um, so when the, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Daly, when the new neighbor to the east built their house, the new neighbor then put up a new fence along the property line. And that's when the current owners discovered that, that's, you know, they had always thought that the original fence, you know, was the property line. And then the new owner obviously has sort of ever come out and then identified the property corners. And then that's when that discovery was made, when the new owner put in the new fence.
So my next, my next question then is, so the easement is from, on the west side of the property line? Or is it both sides of the property line?
Um, so on, on this, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Dale, on this primary plat, um, basically, the subdivision boundary is, is the east property line. So I know that there is a 10-foot easement along the east property line. And I think the property to the east of this, of the subject property, I think that was a, a later subdivision that was developed. And I unfortunately don't know if there's a, more than likely, there's, I think usually for new subdivisions, we usually have a, a required, like a five-foot or 10-foot easement on the subdivision boundary. So more than likely, there's a five or 10-foot subdivision boundary on the other side. But I do, do not know for sure if that's the case or not.
So we don't know whether, whether the easement was based on the legal description and property line or a fan, or the fence?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioner Daly, the easement was based on the, on the property line itself. Um, so for the, so the easement to the west, which is, um, kind of shown on the screen here, this is kind of the, the stark line is the property line. And then the plat itself kind of indicated that there was a 10-foot easement from the property line, uh, to the, to the west of the property line. So this is the identified, um, easement for the property.
So the easement is all on the, in the picture, the left side of the property?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? You wish to speak?
Did you want to come up together?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, if you want to come, we weren't sure if we could or not.
Well.
I'm Jessica Butterfield.
Jeremy Butterfield.
6029 Westview Drive, Meridian.
I guess, I mean, he hit a lot of the details. I think a couple other things were, yeah, the shed was built in 2017. At that time, it was an alfalfa field, and that whole plot next was like a 35-acre plot right at that point. Their building was, got like 2,000 feet away. To the special privilege, I guess, the shed's been in its current location for almost eight years now. We have not any complaints or concerns. Even when we made it, we had other neighbors stop by and actually looking at it, and yeah, admiring it and asking us who put it up for us and stuff like that, because they were interested in doing something similar. At the neighborhood meeting, same thing. We had no, no one showed up with any concerns. All the people who did show up actually were in support of us, as well as we had several people actually text us about it, talking about the fact that...
Some of them saying, oh, no, my shed is closer to the property line than that. Like, out in the country, you don't really, that kind of common to have buildings close to, you know, 10 feet.
Yeah. And then we also know that one of our neighbors across the street has actually, in the past, they had to get a similar variance approved for one of their barns. They had built a barn and then found out later, same thing. They'd built it too close to the side of their property and had to apply for a variance, and then also get all that approved, so then they could get it properly permitted as well. Yeah, I think you kind of described the undue hardships. A lot of that just is the difficulty, the fact that after we put it in, we then planted trees and other shrubs and things around it. So, to try and move it, we'd need to do, to probably cut those down to move it, and then, yeah, because of the concrete, we also run the risk of, most likely, we'd end up either damaging and/or destroying the building just in the process of trying to pull it up and get it out of there. Any additional comments?
Yeah, well, and just the cost of to move it is probably more than the building itself is worth. It's our shed for our, you know, lawnmower and bees, you know, bee products and stuff like that. And as far as, could they tunnel under it if they needed to get a line under it? Yes. That being said, I, it's kind of established out there, it's, they're very big plots of land, and everyone has propane, there's no gas anywhere near that area, and it shouldn't need to be, just the way that it's zoned over there. And, yeah. You have any other questions?
Well, do you know who has the easement? Is it the electric utility easement? Is it the gas easement? Who has the actual easement, do you know?
We don't know. We didn't realize that utilities was covered in it. We originally thought it was just about the irrigation stuff. The only two utilities that are really out there would be Sparklight for the Internet, which comes in from the road, and same thing with Idaho Power, and they also come in from the road.
And the Ryden Bar runs along the backside, so you really wouldn't run lines, like, to anyone behind us ever, because you'd run into the canal.
No, the Ryden Bar canal runs along the backside of the property.
You don't know who owns the easement, then?
No.
So you'll have to figure that out.
Staff might help.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this particular easement, it was plotted with the subdivision recording, is just a general public utilities easement, so it's open to any utility provider to take advantage of. That's why, when they go through this process, they're going to have to notify a bunch of different utilities, give them the opportunity to weigh in and say, yes or no, we're fine with this, or we're not fine with this. So, it's a general easement, not any one particular utility's easement.
And it was part of the plat?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right.
Oh, and also, sorry, when we put the shed there, we thought we were actually putting it like, more like 20 feet away. We really thought we were getting, you know, far enough away, when, and then, because we, yeah, sorry. We didn't even just try to go at 10 feet, we tried to go farther.
Because of where the fence was at the time?
Right, yeah, yeah, and we just assumed that the fence has been there 50 years. We assumed that was the property line, it didn't get surveyed, unfortunately.
When did you survey it?
We never surveyed it, so our neighbor, when the, when the plot next to us sold and is, was developed, they just put a fence on it about a year and a half ago, and that's when, it was a big mess. They tore out our sprinklers, and it was like, oh my goodness.
Okay, well, okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So how did this come to the attention of Ada County?
Well, so, we're trying to build a building, a bigger, like a barn, on our property, just for storage, and, you know, put a camper and stuff like that. And so, it was a big building, and so we are getting it permitted, and that's when I said, oh, you never permitted this other one, which we were told at the time by the people that put it in, oh, it's tiny, just keep it 10 feet away from the property line, you don't need to permit it. So we trusted them and shouldn't have.
And have you spoken to the property owner directly across the property line there, closest to the shed?
So, I mean, we sent them a letter. I haven't spoken to them directly about it.
Do they live there?
They live there, yeah, yeah. They're just not, I mean, I've dropped packages off over to them, waved, but we don't like, know each other, we don't hang out or anything, so I don't really know them.
No response to the letter?
They didn't show up at the meeting, or send a response to the letter. The people directly across from us, you know, sent us letters and other people text. Actually, I got some texts from people, I'm not 100% sure, it was just random texting, we're with you, it's totally fine, but I'm not 100% sure what, which neighbors they were, because when we sent out the letter, I put my cellphone on it.
So you're not encroaching on their property?
No, 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 no.
You're just encroaching on the easement.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to testify on this application? It doesn't appear so, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just back to the process question that you asked, in terms of timing regarding the easement, since we don't have the authority to vacate the easement, is, which, chicken and egg, which was first, we grant the variance with that condition that they have to get approval?
That's a condition of approval.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, yeah, that's perfectly acceptable. You would essentially, if you were to approve, you would grant approval to vacate with the condition that they submit relinquishments to Brent. That's the process we've leveraged for a long time.
And we've done that before, and that procedurally, that's...
That's correct, yep.
And so then, if they didn't approve the vacation of the easement, what would we do then? We would go back and make them move the building, or what?
Yeah, in that case, they would have to come back, and we'd have to reconsider. We're not able to...
They'd have to reconsider, make another application and reconsider, okay.
Just wanted to make that clear. They wouldn't be eligible for building permits on the property to build the barn or do other things like that as well, so they'd be kind of locked.
Part of that was for their clarification as well, so that they understand that.
And as a note, it's, you know, we've typically relied on certified mailings to contact as many utility companies or other easement holders in this regard, because oftentimes, they just don't respond. So we have allowed for some certified mailings at times to basically demonstrate, hey, you've tried to contact any known utility company that may have an interest in the easement, and oftentimes, a lack of a response is interpreted as they have no problem with it being relinquished. So, that is something that has been done in the past as well, just as a heads up.
Thank you. That was just procedural for our benefit and for their benefit as well, thanks.
Okay, well, okay, Daniel, do you have any, Brent, do you have any?
I do. So, this, my presentation will be exhibit number 30.
Okay. Okay, exhibit number 30 is added to the record. Anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing on application 202500616-VAC-V. Jeremy Butterfield, what's the pleasure of the board? Any thoughts?
Well, I'll, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve application number 202500616-VAC-V. Jeremy Butterfield, well, to revise the findings of fact to approve the variance. I would say that I think they met the burden of defining a hardship based on the land, in that they would have to move a lot of trees or vegetation to move the structure. And I think just in a general sense, there seems to be no neighbor opposition. It seems like a pretty unintrusive structure, so I think if they're able to obtain the vacation of the easement, then this would not be a detriment to the community to approve the variance.
Well, I think I would agree with that, but I would also suggest that, based on their testimony, that it did fit within the neighborhood, because somebody else had to do the same kind of a variance, correct? So, it fits within the neighborhood, it's not granting a special right or privilege at all, because somebody else has been done the same thing. So, but what you'll need to do, your motion should include tabling it, because we can't do that right now, correct? We have to write up the findings of fact and conclusions. What would be the best date for you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, to give Brent adequate time to create those new documents, we would recommend June 24th, open business meeting.
Okay, 6/24. Okay, so your motion should include tabling to 6/24 to give the staff adequate time to prepare revised findings of fact and conclusions.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll remake my motion, then. I will move to table application 202500616-VAC-V, Jeremy Butterfield, to June 24th, 2025, for a revised findings of fact and conclusions of law indicating approval, along with the condition of approval that they get the vacation of the easement.
From the easement holder, yeah. And is there a second to the motion?
That's complete enough. Okay, I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hear you none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay. We next have, and everybody's leaving. Oh, we have one left. Okay, okay, well, I'll open the public hearing on application 202500793-AC-V. Rebecca Flex. Okay, we'll have Rachelle Riggs give us your report, our staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Rachelle Riggs, and I am presenting project number 202500793-AC-V, which is an application for an accessory use of a detached accessory structure with a secondary dwelling and a variance to exceed the 10% lot coverage for the Southwest Community Residential District. The accessory structure has a total of 3,444 square feet, with 861 square feet of livable space for a secondary dwelling. The combined coverage of the existing proposed structures is 9,644 square feet, which exceeds the allowed coverage of 4,486 square feet. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to exceed the maximum lot coverage in the RSW district. Here's just an aerial of the site. The property is located at 9861 West Benefil Drive and contains approximately 1.03 acres. Here's an aerial of the neighborhood. There are three surrounding properties to the north and south, which are all undersized RSW lots as well, at 1.94, 2.07, and .96 acres. Here's the site plan. The primary dwelling is located east of the property, as well as some existing buildings. And then the floor plan, the highlighted portion of the floor plan shows the livable space in the accessory structure, which is a total of 861 square feet. Some agency comments, the Boise Fire Department commented that the accessory use in secondary dwelling will need to comply with requested code requirements and conditions of approval. Ada County Building Division commented that a retroactive building permit may be required for any unpermitting buildings over 200 square feet, or additions that were unpermitted post-year 2000. There were no agency comments of concern regarding the variance. So there are three findings for a variance. They are, the variance does not grant a right or special privilege not otherwise allowed in the base district, the variance relieves an undue hardship due to the unique characteristics of the site, and the variance is not detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. The variance does not grant a right or special privilege not already allowed in the base zoning district. The applicant is proposing an accessory structure with a secondary dwelling, which is a permitted accessory use in the RSW district. The need for a variance stems from the fact that the subject property is undersized at 1.03 acres, while the RSW district requires a minimum of 2.5 acres. A few neighboring properties in the same district are similarly undersized. If this lot met the minimum dimensional standards, a variance would not be required to meet the proposed lot coverage. The property size creates a hardship that is unique to the site. The RSW district allows for a 10% lot coverage, which on this parcel amounts to 4,486 square feet. The applicant is requesting 9,644 square feet of total coverage. This includes both existing and proposed structures. However, if the lot were 2.5 acres as required, the applicant would be allowed up to 10,890 square feet by right. Additionally, under the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment, which is pending board approval, the maximum lot coverage in the RSW district will increase to 20%, allowing up to 8,975 square feet on this property. If the lot were plotted, staff would be able to consider an RSW cluster lot, which permits 20% lot coverage as well. This context helps justify the variance as a reasonable accommodation for a legally non-conforming lot. The variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. No public comments were received in opposition of this request, and the structure will require a building permit, ensuring that they comply with all applicable building and safety standards. So based on the lack of agency comments and neighboring comments in opposition of this project, staff recommends approval of the application, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board, from the staff? Any questions?
No.
No questions, thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Flex, 9861 West Benefil in Boise. I don't really have any comments. I do have a couple of letters that I forgot, well, actually, they gave to me right before I got here, if anybody wants those from neighbors for their comments. And, yeah, I'm here if you guys have any questions.
If you want to submit a letter to the record, you'll have to give them to Rachel.
Would you like to summarize those comments?
Basically, just in support of it. Our neighbors are really happy we moved there in December, and we've done a lot to the property. It was kind of a, the property was but empty for about two and a half years before we bought it, and the people were older that lived there, and then one passed away and one moved into a home, so it was kind of neglected. So we've just been cleaning it up. So they're really happy with everything we've done. So it's all in favor.
All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rachel, you will add those to the record? And what else, anything else you need to add to the record?
Yeah, I'll add the presentation and then these two letters to the record.
Okay, so with that, we're ready to close the public hearing on application 202500793-AC-V. Rebecca Flex. Okay, the application being, the case being closed, what's the pleasure of the board? Sounds like an easy one to me.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, based on what we've heard here, and approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommendation, staff recommendation, I would, I'm ready for a motion.
Accept the motion.
I move that we approve, application 202500793-AC-V, Rebecca Flex, based on the conclusions of fact, findings of fact, conclusions of law, and our discussion this evening.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hear you none?
Did we pronounce your name correctly?
We did, thank you. I was surprised.
Okay, if there's any, not any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the board, deny?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
So we're in order to adjourn. We're adjourned, we're adjourned. Thank you, thank you all for your making it easy. Who won? I don't remember.
Richard got it.
Just...